I guess the first order of business is a public hearing on taxi cab local law amendment. I'll make a motion to open that public hearing, Mayor.
Second?
No, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing's open. Anybody at this moment got any comments on the local law, public hearings for taxi cabs? Alright, we'll leave it open and we'll move on. Approval of bills. So moved. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of vouchers. Vouchers, general fund, one hundred and two thousand twenty-one dollars thirteen cents. Water fund, one hundred and twenty-three thousand eighty-five dollars eighty cents. Sewer fund, one hundred and twenty-one thousand three hundred forty-six dollars and fifty cents. And a capital fund, one million one hundred ninety-four thousand nine hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents, which have all been audited and I move that they be approved. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
I would like you to note that one of the bills was about fifty-four thousand for taxes to the New School District. And eight thousand to allow an academy.
Okay, unfinished business. Five streets utility reconstruction project. Updates on that?
Yep, so let's get a good look at what's going on. East State Street and Stope Street, currently there's just driveway and sidewalk restoration going on. The plan is obviously to finish, obviously there's a minor in the roads right now, to top those roads before the construction season's over. Water Street, all utilities are in, most of the road's been bindered and currently there's restoration taking place there. The first block of Park Ave between Shady and Water Street, mostly utilities are done there. And the plan is for Halle to go through the intersection of Park and Shady and stop right after the intersection. And then another note on the subdivision of seventy-five nineteen East State Streets. We got full approval for that at the August Planning Board and so that subdivision's also. I understand there's been a couple of questions about some sidewalks on Park Ave. There's been a lot of sidewalk removal along that street and those sidewalks will be replaced before winter, obviously. Yep, that's my update.
Just to clarify that, they will be replaced with a temporary blacktop for the winter until spring.
Buddy, any questions on that? Bring us down to, basically it's the house, seventy-five nineteen East State Street. At the moment, the board can declare that surplus now that it's all been subdivided and we can think about putting it on the market. My suggestion is we don't put it on the market until the pump house is done down there and we get the restoration done and things look a little bit, things look a little bit different down there. Make it a little better when we want to sell, I would think. But meanwhile, we gotta think what we want to do for the winter. Are we going to close it up? We did have a gentleman interested in renting and so do we want to go back and rent it for the winter before we put it on the market?
How long of a lease is this person looking for?
If we did a lease with him and do it the same way we did the last one, Mark Gable drew up the last one, I would basically take that same lease and have Joe Russell take a look at it and basically that was a month, month lease. So if we needed him out of there, we would have to get out or if he wanted to get up and leave.
What was the monthly rental? It was Paul's son that was in it before, right?
It was the actual owner that was in it that we rented to at the time and it was five hundred dollars a month plus utilities, plus they took care of all the yard maintenance, winter snow removal maintenance, all that.
So five hundred and we didn't pay for really anything as far as the utility, no?
No, it basically, basically it just keeps heat on in the building and it's not following, you know, somebody's there to deny it. But you can set the, you could set the rent at anything you wanted, I mean, no. This was the original owner, that's why we went, basically he thought he had to get right out and I said, no, we can make a deal with his owner. That's what we came up with at the time.
I don't have a problem renting it. My only concern is, is there stipulations as to how we go about picking somebody? Being at world municipality?
Not really, as long as it's market rent, you don't have to.
Who determines that?
What's, what's the going rent in the law though for?
I can tell you, I can tell you, I think if Joe just tells me that if we go at five hundred, it's low compared to what I'm seeing.
Well, the board can set, you can set the rent, you can set a different figure.
I only ask it too because I just, I know we had to buy the property and it had obvious value or whatnot, but, and I don't know what we're gonna recoup in a sale, but I, you know, I'd like to at least get close to our money's back, but I, obviously it was valuable to us to develop the pump house, so that's why I threw it out there, I was just kinda curious what we made. But if we're weighing the options of the value, I would say wait on it, but if we can run it out to somebody and make some money back, great.
So what are you thinking for, dollar wise for rent?
I'm thinking we ought to ask everybody within the community that may want to rent.
I'm thinking it should be a little bit higher than five hundred if I sell.
Get all their names and throw them in half and they'll meet our terms. That way we're not favoring anybody.
Well, I don't think it's gonna be bad.
I don't.
You have to get the best person.
No, 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 no.
Well, who's the best?
The people that I might think are the best, I'll try to turn out the numbers. And I just, you know, you have to be very careful. I can hear what's gonna happen if we're not careful, how we run it out.
Those are the only ones that want to rent it before.
Yes, they're just four or eight dollars. But I don't have a problem with that person, I'm just worried about the perception. And the fact that they have a bid because of the fact that we're working for us.
I think you could say the same thing too when we go to sell the thing, that it's, you know, are we lowering the price because of somebody or whatever, so I just, you know.
Was that a issue or?
You've got to look.
Person that you're pressing, that price, you're pressing.
That's right, that's fine, you can do that. I mean, as long as it's an arm's length arrangement, which basically means you're charging market rent.
Who would determine market rent?
You would take all the properties.
Would be a realtor?
Yeah, I would find, talk to a realtor and find out what the going rent is for that kind of property in the village.
If you want to wait till, do a little more research and wait for the next meeting.
You've worked hard on this, Joe, and I don't have a problem renting it out. I think it should be lifted in the winter. I just want to make sure that for protection of all of us that nobody gets the wrong perception. I think we ought to get, we ought to get a realtor to tell us.
Actually, the gentleman that's interested might even be interested in buying it down the road.
And that's fine too, you know, for fair market. The way I look at the purchase of that, we could put it on the market and we could say, hey, it's gonna be fifty thousand and we could give so long for everybody to make us a purchase offer. My feeling is, you probably sell it for the highest purchase offer and so be it whoever it is. But I thought there was a law that you're not supposed to also make money in real estate as a municipality.
Well, you're not supposed to make money, but you're also not supposed to sell it for less than it's worth.
Right. Which makes.
I mean, you're not in the real estate business, but if you do own a piece of real estate, you're obligated, that's surplus, your obligation is to sell it for.
At least market value.
Yes.
We bought it for something, right? I don't know what that was. What'd you pay for it? I think it was eighty-five. Or if you don't sell it for over that, what would be the problem anyway?
And we're not, we're not selling everything we bought either.
And we're subdividing the land too. But it gets tricky if you got three people wanting, it's different than if you're selling it, you can pick who you want. If we have three people that want it and they all offer the same, well, what are you doing? It's just, it's a touchy situation.
Well, when we get, actually when we get ready to sell it, there's a couple of different ways we can do it. We can hold an auction like we did for the municipal building when we moved it a few years ago. Or we could put it on the market with realtor or we can put it out to bid, I believe.
Okay.
Different options, I mean, you know, once you got ready to sell.
You're right, Joe, I remember that now. I like the auction idea. I do. No, because you set the minimum price, based on market value.
Then if you don't get it, then you don't like the auction.
It's gotta be, my feeling is it's gotta be run it out. You don't want to sit there all winter.
No, I agree, you should not let it sit there. You got the ability to run it, right?
Do you have pipes froze or?
Somebody's gotta check it out too, you know.
You can get a market price, it's just the person wants to run it and take the big if you got to.
The most rents in this village, I think right now, I know up on Park Ave, there's a few of them, just little one bedrooms are going for six hundred a month. So I'm thinking you're probably looking at between six and eight for general rule here in the village, it's a very small apartment. I'm thinking you'd want to go no less than six.
I agree. Plus utilities.
Plus a security deposit.
That is included in utilities, is it? Is that house natural gas?
Yes. It's got natural gas and electric both.
I make a motion that the mayor finds out the fair market value is and if he's got somebody interested in renting it, run it.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Joe, what about fair market value?
Yeah, fair market value, yeah, so do a little research. Okay, moving on, wastewater treatment plant upgrades phase two.
I don't, I don't have any update for that.
The only thing I have on that is I contacted Steve Hump again last week. An email I got from him was, he's still working on grant money that we were promised a few years ago, nothing definite yet. He said he'd be in talks because of the laws and the words.
Yeah, yeah.
Village water system, Watson Water Agreement, so. I made three phone calls over there trying to talk to Dennis, haven't been able to reach him, he hasn't called back. I called again this morning, I talked with the water clerk. She told me she would have me an answer today, either from Dennis or Mike, the deputy supervisor, and it's four twenty, I haven't heard anything yet. That's kinda where they're at. But in general, we're still working off the old agreement and that's working fine and so the villages, we still got revenue coming in and we're in good shape, so it's not hurting us by not adding those.
Mayor, I understand maybe Dennis' foster residence, you know.
There's some, there's some shakeups going over there, so we'll see when things line out. And U S C P A administrative order, I believe there's nothing really there, this is, we have to file our quarterly reports, right, Brian, on that?
Yeah, that's the next thing for that, yes.
When it comes to do our, file our next report, we'll all.
Yep.
Anything on the pre-treatment colonization installation?
I don't have any new information on that, I just heard that. The D V Ps are really low, not necessarily because of that specifically, but could be backing complaints.
We're done on the pilot on that at the moment.
Yeah, that's done. We just have to wait for the final results come back and it's probably another three or four weeks at least. So, and I talked to Mike Tracy a little bit about it and more or less said that we're probably not gonna continue with it based on what we're hearing from the municipal or municipal board and stuff up at the plant, so he didn't seem to be too worried about it. As long as we get low D V P numbers, I think, wouldn't really care either way.
Okay, groundwater development project.
So I got the, the grant application in Friday, so that's for that via grant. So we had the project cost four point two six million for the groundwater project, so we're hoping, I don't know exactly when they'll come back, but hopefully we'll get something good there. Quite a lengthy report, worked on that quite a while and puts a lot of effort into it, so I'm gonna be disappointed if we don't get something. So, there's that and we had the walkthrough yesterday, because we got the one well out to bid to construct that. We only had one guy show up to look at it, so, and I guess the only thing I want to say there is, we're gonna issue a done tomorrow, but I would be prepared to, you might not get any bids, it's just not really great timing and the one guy that was there had a little bit of concern about site access, so, I mean, that's technically included in the bid, but I'm not sure you're gonna, you might get a bid, we'll see, we'll just see what happens, I guess. So, we'll wait and see and that's all we can do, I suppose.
Okay, water supply investigation, draft unlimited occupants agreement, purchase option. Where that stands right now is, we had a meeting with our committee on that and came up with some ideas. Joe redrafted the agreement, it went before the municipal board at their meeting last week. They wanted a couple of changes made and so we had another meeting the following Thursday, I think it was. Everybody agreed those changes, Pam was able to make them, because if everything was on PDF, it was just, I'll tell you afterwards, it was nothing major. So those changes were made and the agreement's been sent off to the parties and so we'll be in touch with them. They just, the agreement was just sent out here within a couple of days ago, so we're giving them time to, and if I don't hear anything by the end of next week, I'll contact them and see where we're at, probably he has to set up another, but it's moving forward. Outdoor street lighting, LED conversion, I did get some stuff back from National Grid on the purchase of existing streetlights. I called Jessica at New York Power Authority, she told me to hold off sending her those documents at the moment because they were revising and she was only sending an email with some revisions before we sent them off to us, so. And I don't know, you've had any luck with temporary for?
I thought I did, I was invited to the planning board meeting, then I got uninvited because they got a subdivision from my neighbor who I, I'm actually involved in, so.
I don't have an answer yet. I've made a couple of attempts to speak with Joe and I haven't had a return call, so.
Is there anything we can do as a village as far as like, the number one, I guess, that jumps right out at us is the redemption center.
Well, I mean.
I've had more complaints in the last.
We've got, we've got, you know, a lot on our books that we can enforce with respect to those issues. I guess my question is, we don't have an enforcement officer. Let me take a look at the law again, maybe we can commence action by a letter from me to the property owner outlining what the violations are.
I mean, I'm hearing he's trying, I'm hearing they're shutting down on Wednesdays, trying to get some things cleaned up.
If I can get some specifics on what the violations are, maybe I can start the process that way.
It does look a little bit better.
Outback, not so much. They haven't done anything outback and that's really, should be taken care of before snow flies in. I mean, there's cardboard boxes with, I mean, it's just, if you drove around, it's terrible. And it could, could end up being a health hazard down the road too.
Well, you took the words out of my mouth. Maybe we should turn it over to our health officer.
Well, you could, I mean, that's certainly one step you could take.
They declared a health hazard, now, now we have, they're not something we have to do that based on their recommendation.
Right.
I recommend we do that and they, see what their findings are.
That's a good, that's a good first step.
They might say that the first step was a step we ought to take, but I don't know.
Well, I mean, the health officer can inspect it, if they determine it's a, their health issue, have, they can, they can issue an order with the property owner and report to you as the health, the health, so.
I'm gonna make a motion that we request the health officer to go out and see if there's any violation of village health codes. So that's my motion.
We need a motion to do that, or can we just go out and do it?
You can just do it, I mean, you can just do it. But if you want to, if you want to take a motion, you can.
I don't want to do it if I'm the only board member that feels that that's what should be done.
I was just about to say, I don't know.
No, I mean, it's, but if we don't need to build motions for it, I think we can just.
Nothing's happened, so I think something needs to be done. I mean, we waited long enough and I understand there's been health issues now, I get it all, but, it's, I can't believe that we haven't had people come actually in here.
We did have an additional complaint last week, I think the whole village does it, by email. So, of course, I don't do much in the village anymore, so I'm not involved in it. Not involved with the status, but I agree, let's try the health officer, not gonna hurt anything.
Well, I will contact the health officer then.
So you're not motioning this?
I'd say you second that. I'll make the motion if I want to second it.
I'll second it, looks like we're in favor.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
It brings us down to the taxi cab local law amendment resolution for local law, then we go to the resolution.
You're gonna close your public hearing, Joe. You have to close.
The motion to close up, any comments on the taxi cab? Can the motion to close the public hearing?
So, Mr. Mayor.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just a couple of things that I think we ought to change. Talks about taxi cab stand, I don't think the village should have to furnish a taxi cab stand for anybody, at least that's their own basic storefront kind of thing. There's no reason to give extra liability on the village and that's where, up right on the front, talks about taxi cab stand. And then, page three, let me see. Then on the last page, four, five and six, if we eliminate the taxi, taxi stand, I think those should be eliminated also.
What was the second part in here? What was the second part you said?
On page one, if we eliminate taxi cab stand, that, on the last page, that we eliminate in four, five and six also. I don't feel we should deal with taxi cab stands and put extra liability on the village. Shouldn't have their own storefront or garage or whatever. And the only other question is, where it says taxi cab, it lists, it says any motor vehicle engaged in a business carrying persons for hire, whether the same as operating from a street stand or submit calls from a garage. This, I guess, Joe, is a question for you. Do we list Uber and Lyft drivers in there also?
I don't think we have to, because it falls within the definition.
Because it's, that's coming into play these days, so I just think we're taking a change.
Thank you, Paul. I think those services fall within the definition of taxi cab in the local law, so I think you're covered.
So, then the changes I think we should make, then, can anybody else, has got any ideas?
And actually, we could probably just add to that definition to include Uber or Lyft and like services.
Which brings us down to another here is the fees. This new law, there's gonna be more work for the police department, there's more things they gotta be checking out. Basically, you're, you're looking at two different licenses, you're looking at your owner's license, if the owner's different than the operator, you're looking at an operator's license, so basically there's two license that are involved. And right now, the village's allowable fee for a taxi cab license is five bucks. But with this new law, we're going to be doing background checks and a lot of other things are gonna be involved, so we don't let whoever's driving a vehicle in our village, all of our residents around us, gonna be safe. Talking with Randy, I think that fee should go to five hundred dollars. But that five hundred dollar fee would cover both the driver's license and the owner operator's license. It'd be two fifty a piece.
Can we require them, I'm not sure we can, Mr. Russell, to carry minimum insurance? The reason I say that is when this Kohairi taxi.
That's in here, they got, about insurance, they gotta list, let us know. Their insurance company's gotta actually let us know if their insurance is canceled or anything.
What do you have for the one that I had, Joe?
But the fees are set by the board, so we have to do that by a resolution also.
Yeah, okay, I don't see where you have minimum requirements. And the reason I bring that up is, when you had the collision in Kohairi with the twenty-one people losing their life, that taxi cab had a five hundred thousand dollar liability on it, which is absolutely absurd. I think you should have requirement to carry at least two million, which is expensive, but you want to keep yourself out and if something were to happen and it was proved that maybe something wasn't followed within this, so, five hundred, it doesn't, it just says they gotta have insurance and I, I think it needs to include a minimum liability. I could care less if they carry a collision under cover, that's not our problem, but the liability is an issue.
So you're looking for a minimum of five hundred thousand?
I'm looking for a minimum of two million.
Can we insert that?
And most of these certificates say that the insurance company will notify us in ten days. There's an issue with that if something happens in that ten day period. And I don't know, Mr. Russell, if we can put language in that says if we are not notified of cancellation, we are held harmless because it didn't get to us within that ten day period. Most of them require ten, they, they allow, because it's a lapse, usually it's a lapse of payment. Or the other thing you can do is you can require them to pay a full premium in full, so you know the policy's enforced each year for the whole year. Then the cert's not as important. It's just how tough you want to get. My feeling is if you're gonna run a taxi, you should pay your premium upfront. I, I've had a situation where somebody didn't and they showed them a policy, dropped a tree on their house and I can't tell that client, I can't give out my client's information, but they dropped a tree on the house and the person that called me, he said, do they have insurance? And I said, ask the person for certificate of liability. And the person that called me, he said, do they have insurance? And I said, ask the person for certificate of liability. They didn't, the tree fell on the house, and, uh, they showed them the policy, but you can read between the lines, well, that already happened. Because I couldn't issue a cert if, if there was an out payment, and the policy had canceled, so the same thing could have to get in.
I just got a question as far as, I think Joe was there when I kind of reached this in the office. So this is for anybody who does, if I have a client that I pick up, if you're an Uber driver, or a limo driver, or something like that, if I pick somebody up in Malville, and they're the, I hired, or Dan hires me to be his driver. And he pays me, that's, that will be enforced as far as that goes, or there's people who own the business inside the village?
That's a good question.
Cause I'm just wondering how we're ever gonna enforce this, if we have Uber drivers picking up people, and they're gonna know that the village is gonna, when I, if I live in Watertown picking up somebody in Malville, I don't know that, that there's a law that we just passed.
We may not know, but the difference of the law is no defense, so.
I'm.
It's their obligation to find out if there's any regulations locally.
So if I pick up, I'm just playing devil's advocate here, if I pick up six people in six different counties, I've gotta pay you five hundred dollars in each, or in each municipality? I'm just wondering how we're gonna enforce that.
Yeah, good question.
I just don't know how we're gonna enforce it, but. I agree, we're gonna catch the ones when they have an accident somewhere in the county, those are the ones we're gonna catch.
Right.
Any need any thoughts?
That's a question for your chief.
Wouldn't it be where your business is located, that's where you would pay, and expect a lot of people anywhere.
That part, I, yeah, I, I would agree with that part, Tim, the problem, the concern I have again is the insurance maybe, their insurance is only the, the state minimum, and they're carrying five hundred thousand, they come into the village, um.
If you do have Uber that I have, we're gonna have no way of knowing somebody's coming from two up to, from Malville, somebody, we have no way of, somehow, right?
Unless you knew them, they're not marked.
Right, the taxis are marked, or at least probably somebody will see that, but the others.
Taxis have to get plates too from DMV, and they know to send them here, yeah.
But the others, you don't have.
I don't know how you're gonna enforce that.
I, I don't either.
If Nick turns off his camera to all the Uber drivers out there, I, I agree with what, just leave it out of the law, it's encompassing that, and if we.
Just don't, we just won't include the definition, and we'll include that within the definition, and then it's an issue.
In the definition. And leave it at that, and if something, if they feel like donating five hundred dollars, donate five hundred dollars to us. I, I don't want.
So what we're saying is, if you're within inside the village, you're gonna pay the five hundred dollars, and you're gonna carry our, our liability, uh, the insurance. And should we stipulate within, within this, Joe, that that's anybody that's licensed within the village?
I mean, the way it's proposed is it includes anybody operating within the village.
Like yellow cab coming down through Watertown, I think they had a contract here a couple of years ago with maybe A R C or something, taking clients around. They would have to comply with the village's law. Or they couldn't do business in the village.
Do, is, if you're an Uber driver, are you required to notify any municipality, is there any notification you have to give to somebody?
I doubt it.
Taxis, we could probably, it's probably easier to trace.
Yeah, they have to be licensed by them.
You're gonna go to do a little bit of research too, but, I mean, there's, there's certain. We don't wanna have people that are not qualified drivers picking people up in the village, I get that sort of thing, but, I mean, there's certain things that they have to do to get, to be able to get their permit, or whatever you wanna call it, from, from them, so.
But doesn't Uber have, they have their own policy for, for being able to hire a driver, be one of the hired on the thing.
So as far as qualifications goes, I think we're.
Are we better off not having them?
I wonder.
Talk to your chief, Davey.
There's certain things government doesn't need to get involved in, I'm wondering that question.
If you're not sure, I wouldn't pass it, we've done it in the past, we've passed local laws, and they end up being, there seems to be a lot of discussion coming up tonight, so if you're not sure, and you wanna talk about it more.
I do remember, I do remember Mark Jeebo saying to us, when we developed a sign law, his remark was Alex Fay does not have sign law. And we developed a sign law, and I don't figure things enforce that well, and I don't see where it's done anything to enhance, to enhance the, or to correct the issues we're concerned about.
I don't know whether we've had many taxis, we had one request so far this year, and I don't know of any in the last few years that we've had outside of that one.
I think the chief might be right, you might want tables for that.
I think we're better off, off of it. I'll make them off to the table.
Why don't you get like a committee together to talk about doing some that, maybe or I'd figure out what you wanna do, instead of just table, and table is more for.
That's why I'm, I'm making tables, and my thought would be that, uh, we got a municipality that's got a lot on the books, and let's look at what they've got.
That's what this one is.
That's what basically this one is.
Or.
Canton, I think.
This is Canton.
Who just changed a few things out.
But Canton's got a little different population up there with the college.
Did you college?
She has two colleges. We have a college too.
We have.
Bring it back up, that's, that's next meeting.
Who's second in Dan?
I will take that one.
You gonna work on that too, Dan, the insurance side of it?
I didn't tell you, for anybody that's running taxis, there's only about one place out there that ensures taxis right now, and that's the sign address. Nobody wants to insure taxis, and what hap- has happened in Kohairi, it's become even a tougher market, and you're gonna see, you're gonna see some of us, they're coming down the front because of speed.
Okay, that's the resolution, and that'll get tabled off, so that's just a matter of changing the dates when we do decide to adopt the law.
And if there's significant changes after your committee would say, we might have to have an, send them on to you.
Yeah. You're gonna be involved in that, right, Randy? Make sure, change, go to, you have the bill. All in favor of tablebing that?
Aye.
Aye.
New business, craft surcharges. There's zero for the month of July. Water budget amendment, the water fund, uh. Dan said we need to move twenty-three thousand, and basically, that's to pay for the capital outlay on the purification stuff, with the coster, the pretreatment, and the collation that we did on the pilot program.
I'll make that motion for that budget amendment.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Okay, next is a twenty-twenty exemption questionnaire, which we get every year at this time, basically, this is from, uh, Office Real County Property Tax. And it's sponsored all, do you wanna leave it the way it is, or keep changing? It lists all the different towns and villages, and what the different exemptions are for aged, for your, that, solar land. I think the last couple of years, we've kept it the same.
We've, we've, in the past filed with the town debt, we, we stayed with what the town did.
Yeah.
What does that mean, Tom?
They're already downstairs. They stayed the same.
They stayed the same, we didn't actually. I have a motion that we stay the same as we've been. Paul has already met, and they have got theirs the same.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item, surplus, basically what this is, it's a permit. That's in storage right now, that, uh, we've checked through all the other departments. Pam has, Paul has, and, uh, nothing that can be used anyplace else within the village, so we'd like to declare a surplus and put it up for sale. Make the motion to that effect, Mayor. Second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondents, uh, just got the letter from Senator Grifol, talking about the last year's legislative session, and the number of bills that passed the houses. Pretty much self-explanatory, and if anybody's got questions. Oh, back up just a second, just to, uh, ask my fellow colleagues, does anybody have a new business, or anything anybody wanted to bring up, before we continue it up? Okay, we're getting on the officer committee reports, uh, village attorney.
Nothing we have already talked about.
I have nothing, extra, food treasury, I'll prepare that, do you have anything, Randy?
No.
Chief of police. Superintendent.
Uh, just one thing, our chip's money, the paperwork was, uh, sent in about, uh, four or five weeks ago. I got confirmation from Albany that everything has been accepted and approved, so we should see that money to add within the month. Would be a.
Capital future plan. We'll be talking about most of it with the water wells. Personnel.
Um, I guess the only thing I can report on is Charlie and I got with the police chief to discuss some issues in the last week, that, uh, I don't think are important, that we talk about in, in public forum. And, uh, EPW, they're ready to review for a couple of people, and other than that, that's enough.
And the other item with, with personnel is, um, I talked to Dan a little bit earlier about it, cause he's on Personnel Committee. If you wanna touch base with Pam, we might need to check with C S C A on, uh, our insurance increase on the constitution, I know they like to be made aware of that. They might wanna take a look at something, so Pam's got all that information in the office. Finance.
Uh, I completed audits for June and July today, and we got the, judges are all caught up.
Yeah.
Fire department, I have nothing. Police department. Anything?
No, nothing that.
Anything that I mentioned? Planning the zoning board?
Nothing that we haven't already discussed.
Municipal board.
Next meeting is October the eighth at six P M, and I think you all probably have a copy of their, their minutes. Should be the, uh, second Tuesday of October, what did I say?
That's what you said, I didn't hear.
Oh, okay. I could've said anything, goodness.
Second Tuesday. Is it from the town?
Well, I met with Randy in the morning, and basically, the lights are pretty much gone in here, I think, right?
Painted out.
Yeah.
Uh, and they're still working on that easement, on that property, and some of that between that pond now and here.
Yeah.
But I don't even really have anything.
County?
I guess everybody can follow what's going on right now, the biggie is, uh, to build and have to build, and to build. And I'd like to bring up one other thing that I didn't mention in business, man, uh, it's not.
Can I say one thing on the county?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just, so the rest of the board knows, uh, the county did share sales tax with us this year, and we refunded our, uh, tax on the watershed up there, we have received that check. It was a little over fifty-four thousand dollars, so, just, it's up, just.
Is that, does that include, or, hold on, you said that they shared sales tax, is that an addition to that, or is that basically what we're getting for the shared sales?
No, that's, they don't have to give us anything.
Oh, I know they don't have.
They had a little extra, I guess, and so they refunded our tax on the watershed.
Okay.
I believe it's a one-time deal, so it may not come again.
They did, well, it's about a two-time deal, because they did it last year.
They, they did do it last year.
And I, I will tell you, they have done it for any municipality that provides water, that they were catching their sheds outside of their.
Basically, just went to like, uh, Dan's municipalities that were working on improving their.
I only ask for the difference between, because they did have a windfall on sales tax about maybe five years ago, and started sharing it with libraries and that sort of thing.
Yeah, they only shared it with municipalities that had water systems and shit.
Uh, Joe, you talked about new business, actually, it's old business, I talked with the gentleman that's been having problems with natural gas. And suggested to him, based on what Mr. Russell told us last month, that he go online and fill out paperwork to be on the schedule to get natural gas drawn to him. And from there, let's see if they say anything, I, I don't think they will, and maybe that'll get the ball rolling, so he's gonna do that tomorrow.
Okay, anything on recreation?
Uh, no, I haven't talked to Dan, but I'm assuming we're gonna get a end of the summer rec, uh, report here sometime soon. I think everything went pretty well.
All right, brings us down to public comment, anybody got any public comment, David?
Just a question. Paul mentioned that they're gonna put blacktop for the winter for the sidewalks, and then put concrete next spring or in the summertime. Could we put out a little notice in the journal or something, or to the people that don't, aren't here, which are thousands, that don't care to come to the meeting, so they'll know that the sidewalk's not gonna be crushed or run for the, for the rest of winter, you know? Just, maybe Nick could put something in this.
Right? Well, it's just, like you, you snow blow all the way down through there, it's better to go over blacktop than the, this would.
Yeah, I know, that's, I'm saying, but, if the people might think, when you put blacktop down, you leave blacktop on my, my sidewalk, and I have blacktop, it's not like, you'll see it from out of space. You know, they're, they all do, I understand, but we put out something that say, you're gonna put blacktop down temporarily, next year, we're gonna dig it back up, and put down, you probably concrete the sidewalks, it's not gonna look the same as my concrete, but it'd be concrete, so. And the sidewalk belongs to those, that's, I'm, I'm good with that, you know, just, just as a little public notice that people don't come, because you can see the representation we have, it's pretty far.
Is that where all the sidewalks have been taken up, Paul?
Yeah, so anything that doesn't get replaced within the next month or two, I guess.
Hope they'll be brought up even so that people can go to a safety.
So Mayor, I have a question, whose responsibility is it if somebody falls in that framed out sidewalk, that's a hot mess between the cones and everything else? If you watch the elderly person try to navigate the curb, step over the wooden frame, walk around the cone, and then step up onto the sidewalk? I don't feel it's my responsibility to home over it, because it's been like this for weeks.
I'm not positive, but I would think it would be the contractor's responsibility, because basically, they own that road as long as they're working on it, we don't.
Is that number available, though, for those of us that now have sidewalks, because many of us have been chatting, and there's, we've been stumbles and falls, and we're all kinda wondering.
Well, they're, they've started back up through there today, uh, with a sidewalk crew putting, so like you're talking on the corner, we're, I would think, by the end of the week, that probably is gonna be all submitted in there.
Uh, it should be all, all concrete, they finally got the sidewalk crew back. They, the concrete crew, the curving crew are kinda fly by the night, you keep them here, and then they disappear, and then it's hard to get them back, but.
They're a subcontractor, that Highlander, so, it's, basically Highlander has to stay on top of the, but, but I know Paul and I got on Highlander's case, because we said, hey, we gotta make these people whole, we gotta get them. Because not only Water Street, you got, you drag up Stowe Street. Because not only Water Street, we got drag up Stowe Street, we got some chunks up there that they gotta get them back together. They're back in town.
I would like to request of the board and the village to consider the Lions downtown park area to have its name similar to what we've done with the Veterans Memorial Park and Memorial Huskies Garden. If we could put a name at Lawville Lions Park. Um, I appreciate everything that the village has done to support us to get this beautiful downtown area revitalized, and Joe's still working with me to get the flagpole area. So I... I'm here on behalf of the Lions Club to see if you would consider that. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Can I... Can I comment on what Sherry just said? Could, uh... Would you send us something written for me?
I absolutely would. Do I send it to Joe?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, yeah, I had a...
I'd like the Lions Club to send it to a senior, a written, a motion request. You know, then we have...
But what the other thing Sherry's talking about is, when they originally did the park, they were hoping to do bike-stone pavers around the flagpole, and that's what's being worked on right now. Um, I believe, uh, Nathaniel Good is going to be the gentleman that does that work, so it should turn out nice. Okay, any other public comment? Does anybody have anything for executive session?
One item for personnel reasons, Mr. Mayor, if you may.
Okay. All right. You need a motion? Get a motion.
I'll make the motion to the executive session for personnel matters.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
You gotta pause the recorder, yeah?
Yeah, we don't know.